And that famous name is gonna just.
Yeah, yes, it is. Yes, it is. It was seven pages long. But I just have to just mention and tell me where if I'm wrong, Jim, uh, certainly give you a chance to respond to this. I didn't see anywhere there in there where he's written grants.
Oh, he's written a ton of grants. Yeah, yeah. I, uh, you know what? I, I've just, uh, to make it a little bit easier, I have looked at both of those. Uh, I've known Steve a long, long time. I certainly would recommend him. Everybody, uh, I also had an opportunity to look at Miss Drake's resume. And, uh, I'm happy with her and I think, um, since this is sort of a one-year stint. See how it works. But yeah, he's, he, uh, just to answer your question, he, he's written a lot of grants. The reason I know him. Because he's our grant writer for Westfall Center for the Arts.
Oh.
And he teaches at, he teaches grant writing and he teaches municipal grant writing at U B. So, uh, yeah, so he hasn't done that. Um, but, um, I think that, uh, the, the thought I have is I think he would be excellent. I think he'd be worthwhile to have, uh, even, uh, for a reference for, for any of us to talk about it. But he might be, you know, with everything that's going on, he might be a little bit busy.
He looks busy.
So, so yeah, thanks. Thanks for asking. Thank you for looking at it.
Certainly, certainly. Any other comments?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I interviewed, uh, Ms. Drake as well and I, I, you're spot on. She's very personable. Uh, she comes highly recommended by Buffalo Niagara Water Keepers, many of whom we have in various positions on our other boards. Um, I liked her a lot. I, I, same thing. I read that other guy's resume. It was overwhelming in a positive way. But it seemed like he did have his hands in a lot of different cookie jars. And I mean, I'm sure he's a brilliant grant writer, but that would be my only concern. He seemed like he had a lot going on in his life. And even if you went to his website, uh, his, the, the thing that comes up at the top was, um, personal coaching, career coaching, that sort of thing. He, he's obviously a bright guy. He had a lot going for him. But I talked to Drake and I like Ms. Drake a lot.
I think saying, uh, yeah, Ms. Drake is, is very, very well recommended. And so I, I, I also think that she's a good fit. And, uh, good to go down the road with her. It's exciting to, to get someone in this position.
Yeah. Yeah. Ray, any comments?
No, I agree with.
That hasn't been said?
Everything. Yeah, absolutely. I, I noticed the same thing that you did Chuck. So thanks for the clarification. Jim, absolutely. Cause I really didn't see anything. And it did take me a while. I'm, I'm pretty quick reader and it took me, I want to get through that document. Exactly. So do, do we know? Is this a full-time position? Do we, have we defined all that or is that still TBD? Because that could influence whether or not people are willing to follow through on this.
Uh, I, I don't quite understand the question, Ray. She's, I mean, she, she would be on board on a buyout on an hourly basis.
Okay. So we know how much we're going to pay in.
Oh, yes. Yep. Seventy dollars an hour is her rate.
Okay.
Uh, she generally, generally asked for, I believe she said, um,
Twenty, I think is twenty.
Twenty hours, twenty hours upfront is kind of a retainer, if you will, for lack of a better term.
Okay.
Uh, and then she would work off of that, uh, and, uh,
He said seventy-five.
Yep, seventy dollars an hour.
Seven.
I think our, our job is to, to identify projects that we are interested in giving her direction in the beginning. And then, you know.
If I could interject Luke, that was one of the best things that she does is she has an Excel spreadsheet, a worksheet that she writes out for us. And she'll, uh, um, put in their grants that are directed towards our town. You know, not just a blanket worksheet with everybody from, you know, this side of the Mississippi. Uh, and she'll give that to us and say, which ones are you maybe interested in? And we'll pursue it from there, which I thought, you know, that takes, that's great. That's a wonderful thing.
Yeah. That. Just add on to that, not to, I think we're all going in the same direction. But I love too, is I looked at that same spreadsheet and I said, oh, this one looks interesting. She goes, yeah. A million people are going to apply for that one. It'll take me 10 minutes to do. It's like playing the lottery. This one's going to take longer to do, but because of that, lots of people are going to go for it. That's more realistic win. And it just, you have that kind of minutia.
Yeah, they have that experience and background and understanding is key. You know, you don't want to be spending money for something you're never going to get.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And, and she did say that she, she'll let us know what the odds were, what the chances were of getting it. But.
Yeah, play the lottery.
Anything else?
No, good.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a, is the, uh, special use permit site plan for six hundred Olean. Uh, this is just something we're going to review or, uh, send to the planning board for their comments and, and review. I don't know. Harrison, do you have anything new that you want to tell us? Or Paul? Come on up.
So from the last time we, Harrison Kelly.
Yep.
Uh, from the last time that we spoke, we have, uh, learned that the sewer does not come all the way down. So we do have to relocate the building on the property to the middle section where previously we had identified the driving range. It's really the only change in what you're looking at. And it's to accommodate a septic field. Essentially. So the paperwork that you have is, uh, partial. We do have a front elevation that I can submit to you now. If that's, uh, something that you'd like to see. Um, and it's, it's very dynamic because we have to change the location and so it's changing the building a little bit.
Do you have a, you have a, uh, tentative final elevation? Is that what you, is that what you mentioned? I don't know. What, what do you?
It's directionally just a front elevation. It's not that different from what you've seen previously. It's just, it's a different part of the land. So the, the topography is a little different.
You know what? Sure. We'll, we'll take it, uh, Harrison, and we'll put it in the packet and we'll, and we'll pass it on to the, to the planning board and then they'll have that.
Great. And, and directionally, it's, it's not dissimilar from what you saw previously.
So, uh, so you're essentially moving it a little further away from the road. But as far as the driving or you're moving, I don't know if you move it north or south.
It's centered in the fourteen acres.
So as far as the driving range, what, where does it leave it?
Uh, no driving range.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you, when, when possible, could you forward over just a new location relative to the plot? I'd be curious to see where it sits on the.
That was submitted.
I wasn't said it. That's on this one.
Is that the right thing or something?
Yeah.
Oh.
These sheets are two-sided is how that works.
Do we have a vote in here? Thanks.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think we're good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the, uh, application for a temporary use permit from the, um, this is the ASKAN, is it? Yeah. ACS CAN, which is the American Cancer Society Career Action Network. Um, I'll open that to the board. Does anyone have any comments or thoughts on this?
Like the, the big thing that we have to do is make sure that the road closure is accepted by the county. I think that's important. Cause we don't want, same as with the NCAA, we can't have a cross-country running back and forth race unless, without, unless we close that road.
And he mentions on the back of the last page, he'd prefer to have the road closed, but you're absolutely right. That's just plain, you can't have a race.
Yep, right.
So, um, what are you suggesting that we table this for tonight until we get that?
Until we get the county road closing and then.
And also, did we ever get a, uh, insurance certificate? I think, are you Sophie?
Yeah. If you have any questions.
Sure. Come on up and, I'm sorry. Come on up and give us your name, if you would please.
Sorry, I'm Sophie Strzelsk. Um, I'm directing this race this year. Um, so last year what we did is we just had some crossing guards um, at where people would cross the street. Cause there's only one cross people would have to cross. Um, but it would be preferred if we could shut down the whole road because then it's just a lot safer and you're going to have a walk up to another point. It just made more sense. Um, so yeah, I wanted to get approval first before submitting, uh, another permit to the town and you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then proof of insurance should be in there. If not, I have a copy of it. I know I'm pretty sure it's sent in already.
I don't have it in my.
It, it, Nora.
I mean, I, yeah, there's one in there. From Erie, well insured Erie Tushakwa Kadrugasposis.
Mm-hmm. I think it should be.
Where is it?
It might not have.
I looked on both sides.
It might not have gotten copied.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
If not, I can always resend it.
I looked on both sides.
Yeah. I think Dave has a questionnaire, comments.
Well, go ahead, Dave.
Whenever you're ready, Chuck. I just have numerous questions on it. Um, so she's correct and past the cross-country races did not shut down the road. I'm talking about other events we've had. It usually is just a crossing guard. On your application, you write three hundred people. Is that three hundred runners or is that total with? Proud that you're coming.
Three hundred including.
Could you speak into the mic please? Or else pull it out of there and talk to.
Okay. Three hundred including runners and walkers.
Okay.
But a total of three hundred people?
All together, yeah.
No people are coming to watch?
Yes. Some people are coming to watch as well, but like around.
Well, that was one of my questions too, is because I'm, I'm looking at this, a couple of questions and I'm not taking it off to your day. Number one question I had was you want to set up at five o'clock in the morning. And you're not far from a residential area, namely the polar fields.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll have to consider that number one.
Yeah, I put it as early in the morning in case, like, I don't think we got there till six thirty last year, but just to like, if, if there's something comes up and we need to go a little bit earlier, like just to like, make sure everything's set.
Was it, was it this location last year?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And the other question I had, like Dave said, three hundred people. I mean, I, I see tents and chairs and tables and a band and, and food and all of that for three hundred people and you're going to be done at five o'clock?
Yeah, it, I mean, last year we had around two hundred participants and like twenty-five-ish people like lingering around. And it didn't really feel like people wanted to stay past like the race ended. It wasn't like this, at least last year, it wasn't this huge event where people are lingering around and I just kind of put three hundred as like a ballpark for now. Um, cause obviously I don't have the exact numbers just yet.
Will there be, are you selling tickets to get in? Is that how the pricing works? So you'll know the number?
I will know the number, yes.
Dave?
So first question is, uh, do you realize this is Sunday of Memorial Day weekend? Okay. So generally, and I find that unlikely the county will let us close on a holiday weekend. In all construction projects DOT or county, that's just not the weekend to shut roads down because of the traffic. So I, my, that's my first concern. My next concern was, was the crossing guards, uh, cause you did not have that on the application. You did not talk to East River Police. You talked to Park Police. Was the Park Police handling that for you?
Um, I don't remember how it went last year.
Okay. Well, it doesn't seem like it was that communicate with the chief or you talked to about crossing them on a holiday weekend? Okay. The next thing is you mentioned you have food there. What are you doing with garbages? Is this a take-home event? You're going to take all your garbage back with you?
Yeah.
Okay. So technically you're not looking for any services from the town. You're just going to have crossing guards to cross the runners. And just so you know, we have done that before for races, because generally they spurt erratic, but you would have to make sure these are people that.
Us, Parks Police, they're not picked up, but unless the Parks Police are handling crossing or you with your crossing guard for me, that's what I, we'd be, we don't have to go. Crossing traffic. Go offense, but we can't have explorers of crossing traffic for cars without any training with cars and runners.
Right. So that's kind of thank you. Um, and I think you can understand staffing for any of our municipalities on a holiday weekend is going to be a challenge. So as far as, uh, closing the road, I don't see that as an option. I, I wouldn't be able to, not the hours you're talking. Um, I could try to get a couple Parks workers. It'd be a challenge.
Changing the race to make the race.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, okay, that was a loop that I didn't expect, but sure, that would solve that. Uh, so, yeah. And then, and I know for this year, this is all fine, but we look at costs and I know Ray and me talked today and let it go this year, but these costs of these events are putting a strain on the taxpayers of the town of Aurora. This is an Orchard Park School event solely, correct? Um, so I think that, you know, you ought to consider that. Um, and if you, if the board wants to pursue doing it, that's fine. But I think that our rates need to really be looked at for the future. Because for me to get people in on holiday weekends and.
And Dave, we are, we are working on that, but I think, you know, the application fee is the fee now, but we are working on that to change that in the future and um, we'll be reaching out to talk about what, what we, we're going to put.
We do need to know what the expense is, and that's why I'm asking about the garbages and the road closures. So, okay. All right. So that's all. I, I'm fine with it. We'll make it happen if the board approves. So, okay.
So you have the name of the organization as, as ACS. I'm assuming that's the American Cancer Society and but Dave said this is through the Orchard Park Schools?
So this is through the American Cancer Society grassroots of Western New York. Um, technically the people who are involved that are local are all from Orchard Park. So like technically it is the grassroots organization of Western New York, but, um, specifically the people working on the day-to-day events or like social media things are within Orchard Park. There, there was these short runners last year, I believe.
Well, any other thoughts, gentlemen?
I, I think the health and safety of the runners and the particip, other participants that are a primary concern. You know, you bring up some good points in regards to, you know, the date and was it Memorial Day weekend last year?
No.
I, I would have thought we'd have this discussion. I mean, not me, but you guys would have had this discussion last year if it was.
Yeah, it was the weekend before, but a lot of the Orchard Park people that were on my team and working with people from other schools, like like other colleges and stuff too.
Yeah.
And that it just didn't work with the previous weekend.
Sure.
So that's how we went with this instead.
That was.
No, I, if I can just jump in real quick, I, I like what Chief Krieger said, and this, this is more to your benefit. Um, I participated in five Ks that were entirely within the park and it just eliminated so much hassle. You start at the barns, you finish at the barn. And you don't have to worry about crossing roads and you can have your water station set up along the way. It, it really would save you a lot of headache if you could. And you said that you've already approached the Parks Police and Knox and they're okay with having the course in the park?
Um, so how we did it last year, we had the cross. I think the maps.
Yeah.
Gave you the map. That's how it went last year. Cause that was based on the recommendation of Knox Farms.
Oh, so the friends of Knox or whoever suggested that you not have it all within the park?
I don't know. I don't know the specifics of it, but if that would work easier and that would be.
All this discussion would go away.
Yeah.
If, if you, and I know you can, I, and I can put you in touch, the folks who've run races there.
Yeah.
That the maps already exist, the routes already exist, they're already mowed and half of your troubles are going to disappear right away. There's restrooms at the park. Um, you would, you would really make your life a lot simpler.
So you have alcohol in the event, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would make it a lot easier.
Yeah. If you can, I don't know. Did, did you end up getting, uh, did you end up sending your contact information to Supervisor Snyder?
I don't think I did. I'm sorry.
It's. Um, yeah, I guess it didn't. If it's in the packet, I can, I can put you in touch with people who organize five Ks in the park.
Yeah. I don't know why the people last year chose this one instead. Um,
There's a little more parking.
Yeah.
That might be a thing, but, but if you're working with a park, they can open up sections of road to park on.
Cause the parking even last year was a bit of a mess because you had to walk from the far side over to where the race started.
Yep.
And like, there's just a lot of hassle.
Spectators will all be on pavement. It, it really would be.
Okay.
It's, it's a nice, it's a nice course for that.
That would be very much.
And they've stoned that whole area up to the woods. Okay. Let me, I'll send you that information if I can find your contact info.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Got it. Actually, I think it's right here, right? Or is that you? Or just you tell me. I don't want to read it out loud. Is that your information right on the front there? Okay, perfect.
Okay. So we'll just table this for tonight and let you get some of this information straight down, then come back to us soon.
Awesome.
And we'll take it from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Oh, I said, thanks, Joe. I whispered it.
Oh, yeah. Helps to have a famous runner in there.
Yes. Next, we have a request from our Code Enforcement Officer Liz Cassidy. Uh, regarding an intern, would you like to tell us a little bit about that, Liz?
Sure. Um, uh, we were approached by, um, Ron Patzgalecki of Ormsby Center. Um, he is the design and drawing instructor up there. Um, has a student, uh, Easter or senior who, uh, is going into architecture next year. Um, and thought that our office would be a good place for him to get some real world experience with respect to what happens after the drawings are completed. Where do they go and what happens with them? Um, the student would only be in our office for three days, um, two hours each day, uh, beginning after their spring break. Um, they would not be allowed to ride in our vehicles with us. Um, but the school is fine if we walked to a job site to take a look at things. And we do have a few that are ongoing, um, within, you know, a reasonable walking distance from, from our office. Um, but we haven't had an intern, I think, since twenty seventeen. Um, it's been that long since Ormsby has approached us to have an intern in our office. Um, and, um, we think, you know, we can make it work and it might be interesting for him to see, um, a little bit of what we do.
I think it would be a fabulous.
Same here. It's great.
Any comments from?
Yeah, I, I think it's fabulous. Do you have any idea how it was set up, uh, as far as, um, I don't know, is there any insurance issue or anything along those lines?
Ormsby does have insurance that they will provide for the student during their internship.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. That on it's on the agenda, so. Next is a request from Liz DeViso. Um, this is in regards of plowing the, uh, Mill Road Overlook Fields. Uh, you want to tell us a little bit about that, Dave?
Yeah. So Chuck, you're the only one left here that remembers all this. Uh, we took over, uh, Mill Road, I think in twenty twelve. And at that time, the agreement we had was to continue mowing it, um, to make sure it never grew up with trees. Uh, there is a deed restriction because of the bob links and, uh, the butterflies that have to populate there. Um, so over the years, I've been fortunate enough that I've had some local farmers were willing to do it for the highway department at no cost. Uh, specifically Grover's, uh, did it for probably the first ten years. And then, uh, Grover's, uh, asked me to come to the town board. But let me roll it back. Basically the field is no longer hay, it's weeds. So the problem is fields need to get rehabbed eventually. And this field has gotten to the point where there's just not enough usable hay in it. So at that time, Grover asked the town if they would be willing to pay for the seed and he would do all the work to, uh, reseed and then redo it. But when we looked into it, it was over twenty thousand dollars in seed. Seed's very expensive. So we just didn't have the money. Unfortunately, we were able to find Ron, Ron Engasser was willing to still continue. So Grover stopped. I think for the past four years, Ron's done a really good job of keeping up with it. But this year Ron is notifying me just like Grover did last year. He didn't even bow what he did. He just brush hogged it as a service. But it's not worth it to him. So Ron came up with a good proposal that he would like to know if he will invest in the fields and do one quarter per season. He will spend the money completely on his own to seed, plow and, uh, rehab the fields over four years. Um, this will allow plenty of space for the, uh, nesting birds. Uh, so there won't be as much disruption. The only concern Ron had was if we had a turnover at the town board or regime ta, change. You know, we could give it to somebody else, all the hay that he invested all the money in. So he doesn't want anything for it, just to guarantee that the town will give him exclusive rights to the hay for it for a minimum of five years. And this is to protect him and his family for their investment into the town's property. Um, I think it's a bargain. Um, you're going to have to deal with it eventually. And if the highway had to mow that, we do not have the equipment to do that. It would be a very expensive proposition. So I think we're lucky to have found a local farmer that would like to do all the work for us. But I don't blame him that the hay is just the quality's not there. So I would like if the board would agree to ask if they'll direct the town attorney to come up with some kind of document for Ron. That's kind of.
Well, I did bring this up with our town attorney last Friday and she forwarded a memo and also spoke to council member Washinsky today about this and Friday. And, uh, we have gone through the um, agreement we have with the Western New York Land Conservancy. And it details what we can and cannot do. Uh, uh, one sentence says that we can, we can hay, we can cut, mow the hay and we can, um, plant. Which obviously you have to turn the ground over to plant. But in the next sentence, paragraphs down, it says that the agricultural, uh, nature of the whole overlook will not be disturbed, something like that anyway. Uh, so long story short, I finally got ahold of one of the directors at the Conservancy, Josh, uh, the story or something like that. Uh, had a great conversation with him. He gave his opinion and I said, I really think we need to have something in writing, writing. He was going to forward that to me this afternoon. And as of six twenty this afternoon, I have not received it.
So I don't think there's a hurry on this.
I, I would ask that we table this until we get you know, the decision from the Land Conservancy.
Did he say which way, one way or the other?
He, he made it sound like he was fine with it.
Yeah, I know in the past I had talked to Nancy Smith many times over the years. So I'd be shocked they wouldn't be for this because it's for the good of the field.
Yeah.
In the long run, but I get it. There is a deed restriction on it.
And is there a, a mapping at all of where this would take place within that, uh?
Do you mean like which quarter he would do?
Right.
Nah, I didn't even eat. This just came about late and I just threw it on the agenda. Ron would like to do it in May. That's the prime time to do this. But again, that's all weather dependent. So if you'd like, I, we could tell him what quarter. It doesn't really matter. Do you know what I mean? I just assume work from the left to right, but if you want to go right to left.
Middle out.
And, and again, it's just trying to leave enough area for the nesting birds without the disruption. He would prefer to do it all in once, but so do you want that, Jim? Like to know what quarter?
I asked, just asking a question.
Okay. Yeah. So I, I never asked.
I don't, I just have a.
I'll make sure that we do a good one.
Jim, 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 put your, put your tent up and you want to know which quarter you're gonna, you know, invest the structure.
I'd be curious to know, and you died, I don't know if you have the answer to this. When, when the seeding happens, when the turnover happens versus when the birds start laying their eggs, I.
I'm not an expert on that. I know the rule we have is August first, we can't motel.
Yeah.
Um, so that's when the nesting is officially definitely done.
But he doesn't want to seed in August, I presume. You see.
No, no, he has to do it. He's got to turn it up and do it all in spring. So, yeah.
So there will be some impact, but we're going to minimize.
There's no way around it.
Yeah.
It's just, this is to me, sounds like we're lucky he's willing to do it over four time years. Um.
And they realized that too, because they, they asked if, 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 you know, if this doesn't happen, what's going to happen with it? And I said, well, if we just let it grow, it's going to grow trees. It's going to grow bushes. It's going to, yeah, yeah.
And the trees will be back.
And that's also in there that that doesn't happen.
Look at Snyder Road. We only paved it six years ago and that whole hillside's already got trees ten foot tall on it. So it doesn't take long. If we don't keep up with Mill Road Overlook, then in twenty years you won't have a overlook at all. So they kind of have to understand, but I get it.
So we will table this also until we get some direction from the Western New York Land Conservancy.
And again, he's not sure what he would let him do in May. That's ideal.
Sure.
You got money.
Yep. Next on the agenda is the, uh, no, the bridge parts. Well, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. I apologize. Liz forgot to let Terry know. He kind of wanted to be here. We almost screw up. Um, so Terry Sprague is, uh, a railroad aficionado in West Falls and he likes to save antique things. Um, back in nineteen sixty, he told me when the bridge with the nineteen thirty bridge was demolished at our dam site. He went down to the contractor and he bought the railing on one side to save it because it was going to the scrapyard. It's been sitting up at his field since nineteen sixty. And he had a vision when he heard that the New York Forward Grant may be doing improvements to the Veterans Park. And he thought that he would like to see that railing now go there. Now, his original thought was to replace the split rail fence with it, but after I explained to him that that would not look good, it'd be a hazard to the cars. Uh, we, uh, met down there and. And, uh, I brought Jerry Sense with us, who's helping design the new park. And actually it fits perfect, the exact length of in front of where the cars currently are. From the bridge to the dam site. Now, with the proposal we're planning, we're planning on developing that anyway, and we would have had to buy railing for that for safety. So this is kind of not only a good donation, but in the long run, it's something that we would have had to buy anyway. And then when you throw the provenance of the historic nature of the railing. Uh, Jerry felt that it would look really good incorporated into the design of the New York Forward Grant.
Sure.
So the only cost is, is you definitely would have to send it somewhere to be sandblasted and powder coated. I think you saw the pictures Liz sent y'all. I guess, uh, he put it on some Facebook of Western New York and he had over a hundred responses how the people love this. Idea, I gotta say, I think it probably will look really good. Definitely not powder blue, but like a black or Parks Brown. Um, so I think if you can kinda picture the site where you park. This would be lining the creek so that people didn't fall into the swimming hole. I, it's a win-win. If you approve it, I'll have the highway get it and then once we get funding from New York Forward, I assume then we could put out the three quotes to. Three different painting companies to have it rehabbed. And you, and you want to do it right, like the DOT with powder coat, so it lasts forever. So there will be a cost.
Sure, and we're gonna, obviously gonna have to have posts in there.
Yeah, and Jerry said he'll be designing all that.
He'll be designing.
Yeah, so this is kinda all part of the New York Forward if we want it to be.
How long are those, uh, pieces, Dave?
It's, uh, there, there's ninety feet, ten sections or nine sections, ten foot long and it literally, it's almost like. Identical to the bridge, so it's the exact amount that we needed anyway. So, sounds like, and these are heavy. I mean, I, you can't pick them up with two people. They're, they're really built like nineteen thirty. So, I don't know if you want six scrap. But, uh, we can get them if you want.
Well, I, I think.
Price is right.
The price is right.
Yeah, just depending on how much it's gonna cost to rehab, you know, like Dave said, you wanna do a quality job, so it's not gonna be inexpensive. But it seems to fit. Why not?
Why not?
It's, it's alright.
If you want me to try at least get a estimate on that cost, I could, I could send to like, uh, Colden Enterprises. There's a few of them. When have we done dump truck boxes? You know, it, I don't think it's gonna be terribly expensive, but there will be a cost, so. Do you want me to try to get an idea or just for the heck of it?
Yeah, I think so.
And then later, we'll have to put it out for three quotes, real quotes.
Well, you're gonna have a little trouble, I, I think, David, because we don't have a design for the posts and, you know, so we're gonna get a cost of. Of sand blasting and powder coating, but that's only gonna be part of it.
That's correct. You still have the project with the posts and.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I.
You're gonna spend that money anyway. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I say, let's take it. Let's, let's accept the donation.
Something happened to Dave and we didn't get the opportunity. They're just laying in a field right now. I'd say get him, put him in the barn at the highway garage with the intent. He did say if you're not gonna use it for that, he does not want us to have him.
There you go.
I, he, so I guess it comes down to, do we like this idea? If so, let's put him in the barn until we have money.
Yeah. That's, okay. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a special use permit application for four twenty Ole Anne Road. This is, this is where the old, um, Shanley Collision was. You know, remember that?
Yeah.
And Ron Barish wants to put in a undercoating business in there. Any thoughts or comments?
I, I know they lost their spot for undercoating. It was a very popular service and that was already in automotive repair and. Painting and the whole kit and caboodle over there, so I couldn't think of a better reuse for that building, but. Obviously has to go to the planning board before we make any.
Yeah.
Formal decisions, but I haven't, I have not opposed anyway.
Same here.
Okay. Um, I do have one thing that's not on the work session and I would like to make a clarification. To the application for J- John Herbst. There was a bit of confusion in the application. John had written down that the acreage was three plus acres. But the survey showed like one point two acres. Since then, we have, Martha frankly, has gotten with, uh, John, got it straightened out. We have the new. And accurate survey in with this packet. And I would. I guess I would like, uh, to get everybody's thoughts on it. Uh, and maybe Doug could, uh, come up and speak to us about his thoughts and. And I, I really am gonna recuse myself because.
So, I think the planning board did notice some confusion in terms of what was being described. Because it was the two addresses, but what exactly that, those two lots consisted of, and we were looking at a map. And that map did not accurately cover the area. There's a section of property on the north end of the building that was not included. That is now in the version that you're seeing. Um, the consensus at that time was. If you want to add some of the property to the north or to the south, that you or your family members own. The planning board was, was receptive to that, but we didn't want to push for anything that he, you know. We did, we didn't want to push for, to push him to add something that he didn't want to add. So I am confident that the planning board, I'm gonna present this to them Wednesday to confirm that that's, that was their, their intent. And I expect they will, they will say, yeah, that, that we, if he wants to add some. Has, if, if he wants to clarify the property and make it a little larger than what we thought it was, that would not change the planning board's recommendation. But I'll, I'll do that on Wednesday and get back to you guys. But that was, there was a confusion about which property exactly that is. It was definitely the building.
The building, the building was, had a, had a, it seemed to have some sort of boundary immediately around it. And you're saying that property adjacent to that immediately surrounding is also included in this rezoning.
Correct.
Gotcha. Yeah, I don't have a map in front of me right now.
Yeah, but, but.
When I remember that.
It was that northern lot.
Yeah.
Is it just the lot, the raised section or the stuff around it? And this changes that stuff around it. Um, because of, of where the actual lot lines are, that's really the problem is, is the survey we are looking at didn't have an accurate representation of what was lot lines and what was not lot.
But, but this wouldn't, uh, and this is more discussion in generally for the board and your, and yourself, it doesn't prohibit our ability. It doesn't encumber the board anyway, because we would still, any, uh, augmentation or any change to that building would still require. Building approval and would be subject to a special use permit for whatever application is that building's being put.
Any change in the structure of the.
Because it's already non-conforming.
Yeah, if, if any change in the exterior structure of the building would have to come back for a, a site plan review. Any use that was not. As of right in the appropriate zone. I believe the current request on the table is C two, but I think the things that are as of right are this, are the C one uses.
Yeah.
So those uses would not require coming back to the, the board as, as I understand it, but.
Provided they don't make any physical changes to the structure.
Yeah, physical changes definitely have to come back.
Yeah.
Use changes, as long as it's as of right, it wouldn't have to come back. But if the, if it's one of the, if you look at the code, there's a whole bunch of things in there that would have to come regardless. Um, uh, so it's kinda like a, two thirds of the different possible things he could do, somebody could do, would have to come back for a site plan review.
Yeah.
The other one third is not intrusive, that's why they're.
Right.
Yeah, and that.
We wrote the code the way it is, where some things are as of right and some things require coming back.
And that additional acreage won't impact his ability to, uh, any, this won't change any of his requirements to return to the board. Because there's extra land involved now.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. We've talked it over, but I am gonna confirm with them that my recollection of the discussion is consistent. With what I'm saying, that they would not have changed their vote based on that.
And going back to the board, we do, we're still have a, we still have to put a public hearing.
Public hearing, but it would be nice to write the. The law and do the public hearing with what the, the applicant wants.
But this, this shouldn't slow us down at all, correct? I mean, you should.
Well, if everybody's on board, uh, I was gonna ask our town attorney if she would write that local law and for the next meeting.
Yep, I mean, I, I think the only thing it changes is the. Uh, doesn't change who the neighbors are, but it would make the property extend a little farther north. And so you might have a little, a couple, a one or two more properties in the notification zone, but that's.
And I, yeah, I think it's very good to, to get the planning board's opinion and we do respect it very much, but it's not a requirement that, um, we hear back from. It'd be good to know.
Yeah.
Um, but for us, we can proceed without any issue.
Yeah, so I was gonna get back to Chuck and, uh, town clerk on, on Wednesday or Thursday to confirm that. Cause we, we have a meeting on Wednesday and we'll, it's already thrown towards the agenda. No, this Wednesday, a week from Wednesday. But yeah, you, you heard us, there was some confusion about exactly what the.
And I did, and I noted that exactly. I guess that's the reason it's so vivid in my head. That was weird. I was really boxed. But we knew it already violated all sorts of sets back, setbacks and.
But as long as they don't change the structure of the building or go for a non-as-of-right use.
So it would be great to have the planning board's opinion as part of our paperwork, but there's no reason to slow the process.
Right, right. And then obviously you'll hear the public hearing and see what people have to say. And then you can make your decision on what you want to do. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so I will, like I said, I will do, I'll follow up.
Super, thank you.
Anything you want to add, Liz, to that, Alan? Okay. Bridget, would you write that local law?
Okay.
Thank you. And, uh, I would also. You have in front of you, a request from Liz Cassidy also regarding, um, their structural analysis for over at Boba Link. I thought if we could just discuss it a little bit here, make it a little bit easier. Uh, Liz, would you like to tell us about that?
Sure, last fall, um, Boba Link submitted a permit application, uh, for a new structure that covers their, um. Driving range. Um, it's a steel and, um, composite roof structure, um, that will shade. Uh, the driving range, you know, so that people can use it when it's raining out too. Um, the issue we were running into was, um, as you may recall, last winter, they had a catastrophic failure of their netting. Um, and so we were certainly concerned about that and this structure is, um. Fabricated in Florida, which has different loads, uh, loading factors than we have. Um, and so we've been. Working with them for about. I want to say five or six months to get the engineering reports on the structure to ensure that it meets. Uh, the, uh, the requirements for our area with respect to wind loads and snow loads. Um, and we finally have received that information. Um, but we're asking that, uh, GHD take a, uh, review their calculations. Um, and, you know, to verify that it indeed is going to be, uh, safe to, uh, install out at, out at Boba Link. I spoke to, or emailed back and forth with Kami today. Um, she did say that, um, if the review took more than a couple of hours. Then there may be an additional cost, um, uh, that the, that would need to be paid, uh, for their time. Otherwise, under, you know, under two hours, it would be under their retainer. Um, and I've, I've spoken with Boba Link representative and. And they're well aware that an additional engineering fee may be required without any issue.
So is it that we're just, we're not, and I don't have a problem with it, but we're not just really comfortable with the engineering review that they submitted for some reason.
So it's not that we're not comfortable with it. It, well, it's taken a while to get the information in, in the, um, format that we want. Um, and neither Rich nor myself are structural engineers. Um, so I, I think this is the reason why we have an engineering firm on, um, retainer is, is to send projects like this to them. For their expertise.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any comments?
Yeah.
From anyone else?
Makes sense.
And, uh. We'll put that on the, uh. Under new business, I'll ask for that motion at that time. Does anyone have, uh, anything they would like to add under? Under the work session? Any thoughts, comments? No? Okay, then we'll move on. Next, under the regular meeting is a public hearing regarding the increase in dog boarding fee. I'll read just, just a little bit of it here. This local law is intended to increase fees charged with the overnight impoundment of dogs in order to reflect the rising costs incurred. By the town for the provision for such service. Section A shall be amended as follows. In addition to fines described to him, the owner of the impounded dog will be required to pay forty dollars for each twenty-four hours. Or part thereof of said dog impounded. With that said, I'll open this public hearing at. Seven seventeen. Anyone has any comments? Or wanna bring anything to the board's attentions, please step up to the mic, give us your name and address. Brad, do you have any comments on the dog impoundment fee? None? Seeing no one. We will close this public hearing at seven eighteen. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four work session and meeting minutes? So moved. Second, motion by Joe, second by Luke. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Next on the agenda is Audience One, an opportunity for anyone to address the board on items, uh, on this agenda. Anyone like to come forward? Give us your name and address. Seeing no one, we will move on. Anyone on, uh, Zoom, Elizabeth? Okay. Under unfinished business, first is the local law. Can I have a motion to approve local law two dash two thousand twenty-four to increase the impound fee to forty dollars? For each twenty-four hour stay, uh, or part thereof said dog is impounded.
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Jim, comments or discussion? Oh, roll call.
Local laws are roll call.
Okay.
Councilman Raisin?
Aye.
Councilman Granville?
Aye.
Councilman Wachensky?
Aye.
Councilman McCann?
Aye.
Supervisor Snyder?
Aye. Motion approved. Next on the agenda. Paper straightened out here. Next on the agenda is the. Uh, motion for, was the, is the approval of the grant writer? Can I have a motion to approve Robin Drake as the Town of Aurora grant writer at an hourly rate of seventy dollars per hour? With the stipulation that each grant meets board approval.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Luke, second by Joe. Comments or discussion?
Do we have to approve an agreement with her or contract?
I think we should have some sort of an agreement with her.
What we've done in the past for the past grant writer for each grant, there was a short agreement of contract for each grant.
I mean, we could certainly do like a framework, whatever she has. I'm, I'm certain, so we're agreeing in principle and then we'll.
E- even if it's, even if it states, you know, that it's seventy dollars an hour, but if you want to put time constraints on there or, or. Whatever we want to put on there.
I think, I, I think her idea, like, as you had said, initially be twenty hours, we'll, we'll agree to it, we'll approve a contract for twenty hours. Which is sort of, like you said, a retainer plus her work identifying and, and bringing forth grants. And then when we identify what grants we want to pursue, I think she said she'd tell us. You, you're looking at ten hours worth of grant right in there. And then we can pursue that as we go, or, uh, prove that as we go.
Yeah, so she, I believe, as I understood, she would give us, you know, I think it's gonna take ten hours for this, you know. She didn't say, okay, it's going to be ten hours, I'm gonna bill you for that.
Yeah.
She said, it's still by the hour, but at least we'll have an idea and, uh.
So I think she'll, I'm sure she'll provide us with something on paper that we'll have to approve at the next, uh. Where it's an upcoming.
Well, when we, yeah, bef- before we give her that, that retainer, I'm sure we'll have something a little bit more detailed.
And do you know if it, would there, is there a separate fee or a separate hourly for meeting with board members or meeting at a board meeting? Making a proposal, is it everything she does is seventy? Um, or she, I don't even know if she has a staff that maybe has a. Um, or she, I don't even know if she has a staff that maybe has a.
So one person show, I'm sure she'd entertain a call from you if you want to discuss it with her without charging us.
Yeah, she was pretty, pretty amicable to, to, you know, if it's a, if it's a three hour phone call, maybe a little bit different, you know what I mean, Jim?
I don't think, no, no.
But if it's.
Yeah, I'm not suspicious of that. I just think maybe if it's clarified.
Yeah, I think we'll get a, we'll get something on paper that we can move forward with, you know, if we're knows it was an attorney, we'd be billing for everything, right? But.
Yeah, I'm sure she must have some standard agreement with anybody.
That's how we make that money, that's how we do it, yeah.
Move.
I hope people.
No.
So every time I talk to you, you billing me?
To change.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, quarterly and we just started, so pretty soon it'll be coming your way.
I think we got it.
But I mean, she must have a standard agreement that she has with her. You know, her customers, I don't know what you would call it, consultant.
And, and in my conversations with her, it was, it was, you know, she'll tell you, this is a, this is a federal grant, this is going to take me.
Sure.
A hundred hours. You know, anticipate that.
Right.
Or this is a simple little one, I can do this in three hours. I, it wasn't a. Here's a contract, this is exactly what, although I, I gotta tell you, she was so easygoing and just a pleasure to talk with and. And I really believe she's going to be a pleasure to work, but I wouldn't doubt for a second that she would do that. If we requested. A hard price, I'll bet you she would do it.
Well, I don't, yeah, I think we just need to have the parameters on a, on, on paper and. There'll be, I'm sure she has something, whether it's a PO or whatever it would be.
Right.
So.
Any other comments?
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Under new business. Can I have a motion to add five I, um, uh, we'll call it a structural review of the Boba Link property? Can I have that motion?
Go move.
Motion by Jim. Second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. First item under new business. Is the, uh, request from Liz Cassidy regarding the, uh, site plan. Can I have a motion to refer the site plan application for the property at six hundred Olean Road to the planning board for review and recommendations?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, second by Luke, comments or discussion?
I did get, uh, I had contacted our building code enforcement officer during the meeting and she did send me a map, which I don't think was in our packet. Um, I don't know if you had this Chuck or not, but it, it's, I, I just want to say it looks really good. It's, I like the placement of the building, but, um, I didn't have, I did not have access to that before. Our code enforcement officer forwarded it on to me.
On the side of the paper.
I didn't look on the sides, okay.
And then it'll be forwarded to the planning board too, right?
Yeah.
Any other comments?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next was the, uh, five K run. Can I have a motion to table the Knox Park temporary use permit?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, second by Ray, comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I get on. Next on the agenda is also from Liz Cassidy, can I have a motion to approve an intern for two and a half hours per day, one day per week? For a three week period with the building department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Luke, second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next was the, uh. The Mill Road Overlook. Can I have a motion to table the Mill Road Overlook until we? Get some more answers.
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next was a request from Liz De Viso. Can I have a motion, actually it's from Terry Sprague, I guess we should say, can I have a motion to accept? Ten sections of railing from the nineteen thirties West Falls Bridge to be used at the West Falls Veterans Park.
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke, comments or discussion?
Thanks, Terry.
Yeah, thank you to Terry Sprague for donating those items and hanging on to them all this time.
Good, great.
Probably not the last thing he's got for us too.
He actually has more, so.
Oh boy.
Boots up there.
I know.
Aye.
You're gonna pick those up and underneath it, there's gonna be something else that we're gonna put in that park.
Any other comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next on the agenda is from Rich Miga, our assistant code enforcement officer. Can I have a motion to refer the special use permit application for four twenty Olean Road? To the planning board for review and recommendation.
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Getting boring.
You want us to throw a, get a little, I say crazy with it?
Next, we have a request from Donna Bodecker. Who, by the way, it's her birthday, so if anybody wants to send her a text and wish her happy birthday, that'd be great. Today's her birthday. Donna, Donna Bodecker?
Wonderful.
Oh, okay. She can love you for that.
And we've preserved these records too.
Can I have a motion to change, uh, Jennifer George's civil service title from recreation attendant? RPT to recreation attendant full-time effective February third, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
By Luke?
Second.
Second by Joe, comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next on the agenda is the. For polling locations, so can I have a motion to approve the early voting lease agreement? At the Aurora Municipal Center, five seventy-five Oakwood Avenue, as stated.
So moved.
Motion by Jim, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray, comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Can I have a motion? To approve the polling lease agreement at the Aurora Senior Citizen Center at one O one King Street, as stated?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second? Motion, second by Luke, comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Can I have a motion to approve the polling lease agreement at the Highway Garage, two fifty-one Quaker Road, as stated?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray, comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Can I have a motion to approve the polling lease agreement at the Aurora Municipal Center, five seventy-five Oakwood, as stated?
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
I support that in a secondary nature.
Second by Luke.
Martha said we were getting a little boring, I was just trying to.
Comments or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And. Five I. Can I have a motion to approve GHD to review the structural analysis at Boba Link Golf Course with any additional costs to be. Uh, passed on to Boba Link.
So moved.
Motion by Ray. Second, second by Jim, comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we have communication. Um, and we have the February twenty-four, twenty twenty-four building department report. And we also have a. Correspondence from Martha Collins regarding the East Fillmore Bridge. She would like it completed as soon as possible. So we all know.
Dave, did you get a copy of this letter?
Martha Collins. Gave us a letter asking that we complete the East Fillmore Bridge as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
Good boy.
We're trying.
Now, I, there should be, I mean, I.
No, I didn't.
Um, but there is an indication that she plans to build a bridge over Casanova Creek, which is problematic. And perhaps it should be communicated that we can have. Our citizens building bridges for creeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what does she want to build it?
She plans, she's gonna have her daughter build a walking bridge over Casanova Creek to help her eliminate. Her poisonous, poisonous snaker root. So, but that has to be discouraged.
Yeah, I would just say she's probably. That's not a real letter, like.
Yeah, that can't happen.
Yeah, she's kind of.
Yeah, just to get it on the record that we're not supporting the building of a bridge.
Creek on her property.
No, yeah.
Okay.
Or no, no, I'm sorry, she does say can or, she does say Casanova Creek.
It's an over a creek.
Well, that's what her letter says, but you're right, she's referring to Tannery Brook.
Lives on Tannery Brook.
Oh, yeah, I know right where she lives, yeah.
Who's investigating the illegal transportation of the weed from one property to another? Anyone?
I know.
Is that a Shane or is that a Liz Job?
Dog control officer, that, yeah, that's right, Roger, he's the one.
That's all the comment I hear.
Okay. Business from board members, and we'll start with, uh, Ray.
Nothing noteworthy at this point, so. Pass.
Jim?
I'm gonna pass tonight.
Joe?
Nothing to report tonight.
Luke?
I cannot, uh, let that go. We have a, um, we have successfully submitted the, uh, fleet inventory. And thank you to Elizabeth De Viso for helping out so much with that. That, um, is a priority action. Once that's approved, that'll get us ten thousand dollars. So, right there alone, we've got ten thousand coming in to start building up our fund for. Um, energy related projects or climate related projects. Um, and we've also submitted the scoping document for the. Commuters, community solar campaign. So when we get the RFP, by that time, we should have the campaign approved by NACERTA. And so we'll be ready to take off with that. So two very good things.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Luke. I'd like to mention that, uh, a week ago last Thursday, um. We had the annual Millard Fillmore Dinner, which is now called a political party. Uh, this is an opportunity for Rob. To get up and embarrass every, every, every section of politics that he possibly can, unfortunately, Joe.
I think he was targeting someone specific this time.
No.
Jesus. I was thinking it was everyone in the, I can't quite.
He did get everyone in the air. He covered them all. But unfortunately, Joe couldn't make it, but it was a, it was a, it's always a great evening when, you know what, when you can laugh at politics, it's, it's a good thing. It was a wonderful evening all the way around.
Are you still looking for a new town historian?
Right after the, right after the dinner, right?
He hears that after pretty much every one of those dinners. But it was a great evening there. And the other thing I wanted to mention too is, is this past Saturday, we had the Easter egg hunt up at Nicely Park. Which I, I want to thank the highway department for, you know, coming in at the last minute. The police department, we had a car up there, we had the fire department with a touch of truck. Uh, it was, it was just a wonderful event. Uh, as we're driving up there, my truck says it's twenty-five degrees out, we just got like five inches of snow last night. Yeah, you know, hiding Easter eggs in the snow, it, it all worked out. There was lots of people that showed up and I, my, uh. I can't, I can't tell you enough of what a great job Megan and our rec department did, making it come off the way that it did. The Easter bunny was there. It was just a, a great day and. You know, one of those where, oh my gosh, here we go, I can't imagine how this is gonna work out. It was terrific, so.
Did you find a lot of eggs, Chuck?
Uh, I personally didn't. I'm going up there tomorrow because I know there's a lot of.
Sure.
Someone catches Chuck on the trail cam with a.
Next on the agenda is audience two, an opportunity to rest the board, uh, on any town concerns or topics. Anyone would like to. Address the board, please step up the mic, give us your name. Give us your thoughts.
This includes the accession of Byberry Court to the town, if anybody wanted to talk about that.
Say that again, Luke?
This would be the time to talk about the accession of Byberry Court to the town, if anybody wanted to talk about that, that would be the.
Yeah, that'd be great. I don't think you got that. Seeing no one, we'll move on to staff reports. And how about if we start with code enforcement officer Liz Cassidy? Nothing. Dave? Shane?
Nothing.
Not, nothing? Brad? Paul? Martha?
We gotta start hitting.
All right.
Things around here, you know?
Can I have a motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray, any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Luke, second by Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.